During the executive session, a vote was taken to deny the NEA grievance with a unanimous vote. I have a motion to seal the executive session minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, minutes are sealed. And now we will move into open session. Thank you, everyone. So if everyone could rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have anyone for open forum? Thank you. All right, we will kick things off this evening with the consent agenda. We have school committee minutes from our regular meeting from July 15th and executive session. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay, consent agenda. Moving on to general business, we have representatives tonight from First Student with transportation presentation, so I'm going to move it over to Mr. Andre to introduce everyone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, thanks to Rich and team for showing up. So Rich is the general manager of Rhode Island and they'll introduce themselves further. Maria's here from the Providence area and Sherry's our local First Student management company. So Marco's going to share their presentation, what you have in your packet tonight. They're going to go through their presentation along with some of the routes they've started to put together for the upcoming school year, along with ridership, and answer any questions that the school committee has. So Maria, if you don't mind.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. So we understand that we have changed our transportation model for Tiburon a little bit, so we wanted to go over that with you and help in any way that we can with any questions you have about that. So the first slide is our mission statement and values. Our mission statement is to provide unmatched care and the safest ride to school. So when students arrive, they start and end their day with an exceptional experience and are ready to achieve their full potential. Our values are to focus on safety, care for the students, surpass customer expectations, foster teamwork, and set the highest standards. So some of the things that we're going to go over tonight are our industry-leading expertise. We have the unparalleled customer service focused on student care, improved student experience, least restrictive environments, award-winning safety, seamlessly connected technology, visibility and transparency, dedicated routing expertise, and industry-best maintenance. So our company has 545 locations across 43 states and eight territories. Nineteen hundred, I mean, sorry, nineteen thousand plus schools, 5.5 million daily journeys, 46,000 vehicles, and over 61,000 employees. So this slide says it's the Rhode Island area, but as you can see, it's more of the East Bay area. So those are our East Bay locations that we service. Our Bristol Warren, Portsmouth, Little Compton, and here in Tiburon. In addition to that, in Rhode Island, we also have locations in Providence, Pawtucket, Lincoln, Situate, Warwick, Jamestown, Foster, and West Warwick. So the advantage of that is that in any time that there's any driver shortage or vehicle issues or unforeseen circumstances, we work together to make sure that everything is covered. You'd never have to worry about, you know, getting a phone call that we're not coming. So our pre-employment screening. We have background checks, motor vehicle checks. We do drug tests, state, local, client-required checks, DOT physicals, and dexterity exam. Once they are hired, those requirements are repeated yearly. The only thing that is not yearly is the random drug testing, which is on a quarterly basis randomly. So it's something that's continuing and we have a hold on what's going on and, you know, making sure that we know that we have the safest employees transporting our children. So safety first is one of our biggest values. So for safe drivers, we ensure rigorous background checks, extensive driver training programs, continuous driver performance monitoring. We have many safety programs, industry-leading KPIs to monitor driver safety focused on protecting people, products, property, and information. Risk-based safety review processes. Our safe vehicles all have aftermarket safety features. We have a child check system that requires the drivers to go into the back of the bus. That's also in caravans. They have to get out, go around to the back, check through the trunk to see, make sure that there's nothing, no one left in the vehicle at all. So that's a very important safety feature to have when dealing with the special needs children. They fall asleep, you know, it's a long day. Weather changes, things like that. So the child check, child check safety system is, I think, one of the best things that we have. So the industry standard is equipment training, roles and responsibility, students with special needs, loading and unloading, and emergency preparedness. The First Student difference is that we have the advanced safety culture, understanding and responding to behavior, the least restrictive environments, leadership trainings for all employees, onboard student supports in the way of one-on-ones or behavioral plans worked out with the school or special education, tiered intervention systems, dedicated behavioral program managers, and annual strategic planning. So that all makes for a better student experience with the best drivers, best leadership, best communication, and 27% reduction in negative behaviors. There's a new system coming onboard, one company, one standard, one platform. So the state legislatures are working together to try to use personal vehicles for transportation. They weigh in all their options. Right now in Rhode Island, the smallest vehicle we use is a caravan. However, there's more to come with that, so I just wanted to bring that up. So HALO is our routing system, tracking system. It's all-in-one. It's a new system that puts all our dashboards together so that anyone in Sherry's office can get you any information you need as soon as you call. It's all at one click. So HALO unifies all essential operations and allows dispatchers to manage all routes for the day, mark absences, reassign routes and vehicles, and monitor route performance. So six essential functions include schedule management, route coverage, driver time management, driver navigation, route performance, and student ridership tracking. So this program feeds information directly into your FirstView app, the parent view app. With your new district code is also in the PowerPoint. So that's the good thing about HALO. It feeds that live information right into the app. So they can, parents can track the vehicles. It's all live. And if there's a vehicle switch that Sherry makes in the HALO system, it will populate right into there, so there won't be any questions. The driver tablets. This is what they use to do their safety checks in the bus. They do a pre-check of the bus before they leave the bus yard. When they drop off, you have a three-tier system. So when they drop off at the first school, the driver has to walk the entire bus with the tablet, do that safety check that I talked about earlier. Then they go do their second tier. Same thing, they get to that school, they have to walk the bus with that tablet, do that safety check. And again at the third school. And again when they return to the bus yard. They also do a post-trip to make sure that all of the things they checked before the bus, the lights, before the route, rather, the lights, you know, the brakes, the fluids, the wipers, everything is still working. And that's how they do their post-trip. And all of that goes right into the same HALO program, which then reports to maintenance and to Sherry so we won't, we'll have minimal mechanical issues on the road as well. So then there's also within the HALO app, an onboard behavior incident reporting and tracking system. So this is also something that is available to you and Sherry can get you the information if you are interested. It is a web-based reporting system. So right now you get conduct slips from the driver that go to the principal. Then they get reviewed. And then, you know, it's the turnaround time is probably maybe four or five days because if you're getting a lot of paperwork and by the time you check the box, this is all digital. So the driver would put it into the system. It would send an email to whoever's in charge of bus conduct at that particular school, and you can respond right there as well. And then, again, this slide speaks to all of the tools to evaluate the performance of the route, the driver, the vehicle. The on-time performance report, because we know that is very important for the students not to lose instructional time. So we want to make sure that they are beginning their route on time, that it flows correctly, and the students can get to school on time. Same thing at the end of the day. The first tier usually goes off without a hitch, but you want to make sure that the other, you know, the other schools that are waiting, they also, teachers have meetings and things to get to. So on-time performance is a big thing for us as well. And the preventative maintenance is a schedule that our maintenance, our maintenance team follows where they do, just pull the buses in on a six-month schedule to make sure that everything is just running smooth. The driver doesn't have to report there's an issue. They just pull it in and check it. The video cameras. So each bus has three eyes, or three, so it's a three-eye system. So the camera's in the front, the middle in the back. We do a weekly camera check. So multiple times per day, Sherry will send her maintenance person to get a couple of videos, bring them in, she'll check them, make sure that they work. Because we want to make sure that, you know, that they're in the bus, but we have to make sure they work. Because why are they there if they don't? So that is something that we do on a daily basis. The reports are submitted weekly to the manager and then monthly to the AGM. So we can make sure that we are on top of all of our cameras. And then our invoicing. So we have comprehensive invoicing. Population type, split district billing, cost breakdown. The changes are made easy. You can address routing changes, accommodation requests, special needs changes. We can address all of that just in one simple email or phone call to Sherry or Michelle. Because they do their own routing, if there's a change with the student, you know, you have a special needs student that we found, there's a new behavior and we need to change the way that we approach, you know, the loading of the bus, or the unloading of the bus, or where he's sitting. It's a simple phone call and Sherry can just make that change. The turnaround time is usually between 24 and 48 hours. Same thing with address changes, because she personally does her own routing. It's just, she, her turnaround time is very quick. She's committing to 48 hours for any changes that need to be made.
So thank you for your time, and if you have any additional questions, Richard is here to answer anything that you have. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us again. I'll be happy to expand on anything that Maria touched, or if you have any other routing questions, efficiencies, anything that you want to discuss related to transportation. I'll be happy to help.
Thank you. I'd like to give everyone the opportunity to ask questions. I think maybe what we can do is focus on questions about the presentation first, and then we can talk about perhaps routing questions afterwards. So does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes?
I have just a simple question. What is onboard student support? Under the special needs page?
Yeah. Some of our students require specialized support. Some of them might need a one-on-one, a specialized teacher and aide that needs to ride with the student. Some of them may have a specific transportation plan that needs to be on the bus, under the driver, and the monitor. Everybody needs to be aware of, be familiar with that transportation plan. So the supporting has to, it involves cooperation, collaboration between the schools, the bus driver, supporting staff like a one-on-one, sometimes a nurse, making everybody, in other sense, making sure everybody understands what does the student need to be safely transported to and from school every day.
Okay, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here tonight. How long has First Student been using HALO?
HALO is a platform that is now encompassing all the solutions that we have been providing for many, many years. It's just difficult for school administrators to be familiar with First View, First Act, First Alt, so many other technologies that are there and that we use and we have been using for many years. I think it's easier to be familiar with one solution, HALO, that encompasses all the solutions. It was just rolled out in our summer conference this, this year when we attended. So it's fairly new for most of our teams, but the technologies behind it have been in place for many years.
So do our parents currently have access to the app, the tracking app?
Yes. We have had already a call scheduled, Sherry Coram, if I run, about First View. Yes. We are in the process of rolling, rolling it out as of September. Once the school has its account, it will be up to the school to open that up for parents. But starting this fall, all parents will have access to the app.
Is it an additional charge, or is it part of our contract?
No, the First Student was generous to give us a free subscription. We had a rollout meeting at the, our last admin council in June, right before the end of school. And then we had another onboarding meeting in July. So now we have to transfer it to principals and parents, et cetera.
That's, I mean, I would have loved that 10 years ago.
Yes.
That's awesome. Can you explain split district billing? Does that mean we have some students in which we share the cost with another community?
Many school districts are getting smarter and smarter with regards to the saving opportunities that sharing resources provides. Tiburon is leading the charge in the East Bay area. Tiburon's sharing the bus with at least one district right now in the East Bay area, and they're going to be splitting the cost of the bus, depending on how many students are per district. They're going to be splitting the bill.
That's for out-of-district specialty. Yeah, that's something that's new this year, yep.
Okay. And do you know for Tiburon specifically, when our routes were last reevaluated, not including the change with Fort Barton, but just in general, like the routes for Ranger, Pecassett Middle School, High School?
The routes are typically reviewed a couple of weeks after startup in September. Some of the students that were routed initially never take the bus. So it's pointless to have them listed if they're never taking the bus. So at that point, those students will be removed from the list and provide additional opportunity maybe for add efficiencies in some other routes, improve with timing in other tiers and so on. But it's something that we have been doing every year. One thing that we haven't done consistently, I would say, is to provide the transportation team an approved roster. Who are the students that are eligible for transportation? Most districts provide that to their transportation team on a yearly basis. They tell us, these are the students that are eligible for transportation based on walking distances or maybe IEPs, but these are the students that you need to route. Currently in Tiburon, if they're enrolled, they're eligible for transportation. So it's, it provides an opportunity to maybe change policy, change the process in the upcoming years to provide just an approved list of, for routing only. So Sherry can list only those students, not everybody that's registering in the school.
Okay. Just two more questions. Thank you for your patience. So if, if a parent had a concern about a bus driver or a bus monitor, and I'm just thinking about things I heard in the past before I was on school committee, how, what would a parent do with that information? Who would they contact to say like, hey, this bus driver's really giving my kid a hard time, or something to that effect? What, what would a parent do?
Either the school district or the bus, the location manager, Sherry.
Okay.
Will take those complaints, allegations very seriously.
Yep.
And we address them as needed. And the school district has the right to remove any driver or any aide from service if they are not complying with the policy, they're not meeting the district needs with regards to transportation.
Okay. All right, last question. Just thinking back when my kids were on the bus and initially, when the bus dropped them off, they dropped them off on the opposite side of a main road and they had to cross the main road to get to our street. We requested that specific route be rerouted so that the kids got dropped off on the right side of the street and didn't have to cross traffic, because we all know cars don't always stop. Are all routes like that now when we're talking like Main Road, Fish Road, Bogomar, like, is that considered with this routing? So that kids don't have to cross a main road?
I'd rather have my location manager, Sherry, answer that question if you don't mind.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi. So Bogomar Road, they can't cross because of the speed limit.
Right.
So they're not allowed to cross. Fish Road, yes, Mr. Dakota started that.
Yes, I have, my kids were on that bus when he asked that.
That was in place. But Main Road, no. For the elementary, yes, but like middle school and high school, not so much.
Okay, so for the elementary kids, they don't have to cross, like, a main road?
If they do, they go up the road and back down again.
Okay.
So if the route should show to get off the first time, they can let me know, and then we'll change it for them to go off the second time around.
Okay.
That's why we do dry runs, so they can let me know what they're seeing out there.
Understood. I saw way too many incidents of cars not stopping, so it's pretty scary.
It's true.
Thank you. I'm done with my questions for this.
Thank you.
Of course I have questions. Regarding cameras, cameras are on every single vehicle in your fleet?
Yes, this is new under the new contract that we just signed. Any existing bus is equipped with three cameras. Any new vehicles coming into service will be equipped with four cameras.
Okay, so even the vans that?
The, the vans have one. The buses have three, the vans have one.
Okay. But there are cameras on every vehicle?
Correct.
Okay.
And this, just to be clear, these are just aimed to control or to monitor the inside of the bus. They are not the outside traffic control cameras that are very, been discussing in the public. I, right now, I think many districts are, they have a timeline there. I think the deadline is 2030 to have all buses equipped with outside cameras to prevent those people that don't obey their reds and just pass on the side, you know, very unsafe.
Okay. And the out-of-district students that you have, if they're going on a van or a car, is there going to be a monitor with every one of those students? Or is that IEP-based, or?
If they are elementary-age children, we are supposed to provide an aide. If they are not in elementary school, it's based on the IEP.
Okay.
After fifth grade.
After fifth grade?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Let's see, my next question. So you're all set with drivers and monitors to start? I know it's so hard to find monitors.
That was my other question. I forgot to ask.
Yeah, good, good question. We added eight mini vans this, this summer. We are in the process of hiring more of those. We may need a few extra weeks to have a full complement of van drivers. As far as CDL drivers, we are, we have what we need. As far as van drivers, we continue to hire. But Maria mentioned also the support network that we have in Rhode Island. Just to give you an idea, Providence is sitting on a spare of, a pool of 25 extra drivers. We can send those drivers wherever they're needed to support our districts, our customers. So there should be no concern. You're going to have enough bus drivers and van drivers. But we're going to have to spend a couple of more weeks in recruiting and training to have more of our own here in Tiburon.
And the monitors? I know last year there was a few routes that didn't have monitors.
Yes.
Sherry, where do we stand on monitors?
We're looking good with monitors. We're hiring for the vans, though, because that's new. But the regular, we're looking good with those.
Monitors, we're all set.
Okay. That was, we heard that from a few parents in the fall, I think. Yeah, monitors were an issue.
So the bus monitors are all set. It's just the van you're working on?
Vans, correct.
Because that's a new part of your business?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have?
Okay. Just to follow up on a couple of the previous questions. With respect to bus monitors that are required by law, if you are unable to fill those positions, how, what's the next, what's the escalation path there?
We normally use drivers that may be on the bench to serve as monitors. As far as training goes, they are all subject to the same training. They, everybody understands what is the expectation, the, the job discretion for a monitor. But if it's going to be a persistent need or long-term need, we have too many people on a leave of absence, per se. On those cases, we will reach out to other locations to provide assistance as needed.
Okay. And then you also spoke to the bench, if you will, available within other communities to, to help in the event of driver absences. Is that something that's new with First Student? Because I will tell you, not so much in the last school year, but prior to that, we, we experienced any number of bus cancellations. It was bordering on very ridiculous that parents were being left in lurch over and over. So I just want, and again, not as of late to my recollection. Is that something that's new, that you've developed this bench, or?
No, but it took us a couple of years to leave the pandemic behind and the tremendous driver shortages that we have nationwide. We have been slowly but surely building up our spare resources in multiple locations. So while the concept is not new, we are in much better shape now than in the past, that is for sure.
Very good. And then lastly, this, this app for parents. When will we be making that available to our parents?
It's ready to go. We just have to have our ad council meeting in a few weeks and we'll talk to the principals, and the principals would include that in the newsletter. We haven't included it yet because we got to finish the routes first.
Okay. Because hopefully for the first of the year.
Yeah, the idea is we don't want to be sending it to anyone that's not using the bus. So we, we want to, we want to get, we have all apparent information and we'll send it to that select number of people first. So we're just finalizing that route, that route information first.
Okay. Thank you. So, and again, I deliberately asked that we talk about this first because I think, you know, two separate issues here. And Mrs. Sherman touched on it a little bit with the routes. As you may be aware, our district for the fiscal year that just ended, we ended up in a deficit. And we're not alone in Rhode Island being in a deficit, but we were. And it's incumbent upon us to be looking for efficiencies wherever we can. We want to be able to provide the very best experience for our students while staying within our appropriation. We did receive just today, and, and thank you very much for this information with, and I assume this is the schedule for the routes for this coming year as it stands today. And, you know, it's all good. Now, I guess my first, and I'm just going to ask a couple of questions because I know there are members who want to really get into this. Who puts together the stops themselves?
Our location manager does the routing. She has been doing that. She's very familiar with the community, the students. She's the one that handles routing. Sherry, yeah.
Sherry, nice to meet you, by the way. You've been with First Student for a very long time.
Yes.
First time I have met you. So that was just one high-level question. And then, of course, we'll want to talk about ridership, but, you know, just understand the position that we're in. Our transportation is a significant expense line in our budget. And every dollar we spend on things that are not. Um, and, and every dollar we spend on things that are not direct educational items are things that we have to look at very closely. So with that said, um, I know Jocelyn, you, you've been wanting to kick off this conversation. I'll, I'll let you take the stab at it first.
Okay, thank you. So I asked about the, the routes earlier and like when it's evaluated, um, and, and I guess I'm curious, like what our participation can be in that evaluation because like, I'm looking at some of these buses and is seventy-two capacity for your buses?
Yes.
Okay, so you have some buses at seventy-two and then some are at seventeen. So there's a huge difference and, um, I imagine that's, you know, the seventy-two is where it's more densely populated, seventeen's, uh, where it's, you know, not quite as populated. So when you have a few routes that are like fifteen, seventeen, thirteen, do you ever look at condensing those?
Yes, and obviously we're gonna take a harder look at those scenarios this year. We understand the challenges, financial challenges that Tiverton and many districts are having. Um, there's many strategies to, to cope with that. One of them is maximizing the, the amount of time that we are already paying our drivers and monitors. Uh, this is no longer a twenty-hour a week job, it has grown to twenty-five, thirty, and even, uh, higher number than, than that of hours per week. Um, so the districts will be paying, are paying already for that, whether they have a one-tier or two-tier or a three-tier system, they are paying for those drivers' wages. Good news here in Tiverton, with the exception of four routes, you already have a three-tier system in place. That means each bus driver, with the exception of those four, is, is doing three, three runs essentially. Mid-school, high school, elementary, high school goes first, obviously. So you are in, 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 in great advantage with regards to that. Not everybody in the East Bay area has a three-tier system. Most are stuck with two, two tiers only. And it's very challenging to change those bell times to accommodate a three-tier system. The other opportunity is to continue to review the ridership information. We need to see who's actually gonna be taking the bus the rest of the year and consolidate where it's possible. Obviously, when we can save a bus in, uh, let's say the elementary side, the small, the K two-five community, uh, that's great, but we need to be able to find something similar with the other tiers, the middle school and the high school. If we don't have that, then eliminated elementary run doesn't do, do much because we still have to run the same bus for the other tiers.
Right.
Right. Um, one thing I want to mention as well is that having that information ahead of time would help us. Uh, this requires developing a policy, a system in place in which the district would ask each family their intent with regards to transportation for the upcoming year. Is little Johnny gonna take the bus, yes or not? You know, kind of registering for that. With that information, instead of routing for twenty-two buses, maybe you can route for twenty only.
Right.
Save two right off the bat. That would help us.
Yeah.
But even without that system in place, we're gonna review those routes. I will be personally reviewing the routes with Sherri this year, see where we can find some, um, efficiencies, consolidate routes as needed.
So you'll start that process in September after you see ridership?
Yeah, typically by the second, third week, we, we kind of know where the chips are gonna fall, who's interested in taking the bus, and we'll share that data with the district, get their input, make sure we, we don't eliminate a bus. Because sometimes students may not take the bus for the fall, but they're planning to do it in, in the winter time, for example.
Right.
So we want to have that information reviewed by the district before we make any decisions.
Okay. So I guess the other thing that I would want to consider too is like looking at some of those smaller, um, numbers. If, if when consolidating, does that increase the length of the time that the student is on the bus? Like from some of those further out locations? I'm sure that's a factor to consider.
It's definitely a factor, yes. We, because, uh, the fact, it has to work for all three tiers and it has to work morning and afternoon. It's more challenging in the afternoon because we have, the, the bell times are more closer to each other.
Yeah.
So instead of fifty minutes, for example, that we have in the morning, in the afternoon, we may only have forty, forty-five minutes. So it's, it's more challenged to get to the next school on time if we load those buses to the max.
Okay. Again, I don't know if you, um, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm looking at some of the planned ridership numbers and in, in a few cases, they're in the single digits. Would those be considered special ed runs?
Everybody's routed, uh, together. Sherri, correct me if I'm wrong.
It depends that, we do have, I do have special ed runs there, but there's only three kids or four kids on that particular route because that's all that's going to that school. Like, for example, for a day, there's only two children that ride for that particular vehicle, for that school.
Well, I'm seeing here, bus, bus twenty going to the middle school has three kids.
Special ed.
That is special ed.
Special ed students, yes.
Okay. Um, I appreciate your willingness to work with us on this, um, because, you know, as we mentioned, it, it's, you know, time's a tight.
Yep.
And the, living here in this town, anybody who lives here, and I don't know if this is a Tiverton-only thing or if this is something that takes place in every town in Rhode Island and beyond, but, um, especially where you look at the high school. The numbers you have on here can't possibly hold up.
Yeah, there's nobody.
The buses that we see on the roads are nearly empty, a lot. And it's, makes sense, right? A lot of these kids, they get their licenses and even before they get their licenses, they're getting rides. Um, we, we have a, and, and we do have a high number of parents here in Tiverton who choose to bring their children to school, just, you know, listening to the stories of the horrors of drop-off every morning. You know that there's a good-sized
Yep.
compliment there and, and that the numbers we're seeing here, um, doesn't represent actual ridership or anywhere near that. So I think it is incumbent on us to take a more realistic look of what the need is and have it work. And I understand the three-tier concern and all of that. I know it's a complex issue, but I do also think that we have to find ways to do this. Um, I'd also want to question, for the buses that are going outside of our district, um, are we, for those that are not special needs related, um, and for example, um, those who are going to Portsmouth High School, are we sending buses around town or are they picking up at a central location?
Depot stops.
Depot stops.
Depot stop?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and obviously, um, wherever, I, I know, I gotta kudos to Mr. Andrade, right? For trying to work with other districts to, to consolidate things, um, you know, it's, that's wonderful, but I just wanted to make sure that we're, we're providing what we have to provide and certainly with student experience and, and safety being the, the top
Yep.
priority, but
Yep.
we have to try to do so in a fiscally responsible fashion.
Safety is certainly a, a, um, biggest concern. Um, it's, and with the lack of sidewalks, uh, in most areas, makes it very difficult to implement a, a policy that would require a student to be certain distance away from the school, the walking distances that we are so familiar with in other areas. It's difficult here in Tiverton.
Certainly. Um, but I do think that there's some opportunity to take a look at what the actual ridership is.
One hundred percent agree.
And, and adjust accordingly.
Yep.
So when would we be able to perhaps take a closer look at this?
In September, by the third week, we should have the results back. We will work with our drivers to make sure we have accurate data of who exactly is taking the buses, both morning and afternoon, and we'll share that data with the district and I'll be happy to come back here and show the results of our, our review as well.
Who from the district is the point person?
We'll start with Brenda.
Thank you. Do you get all the calls when there are children who are, don't have somebody at the bus stop or any of that?
Uh, no, principals due first. I kind of am the second layer before the superintendent.
Well, I'll just wrap up my diatribe with my best to all of you as we are about to go back to school within the next few weeks. And I know the first couple of weeks are a challenge, um, and I do think the last couple of years, it's gone fairly well, um, as opposed to some previous years. So I, I kudos to you for that and kudos to the parents. I, I love the, the idea of the app so that parents can kind of track where their kids are before they go on Tiverton happenings. They can take a look at their app. Um, so, oh, oh, good. Kim, did you have anything?
I was just wondering, with the consolidation, it's obviously preliminary, how long is the longest route?
Yes, Sherri question.
When you're consolidating.
Good question. Um, probably in town?
Yes.
Probably a couple hours in that, two and a half hours maybe? Because we've got buses that go to the far of the line and also have to go to a little confident turn around and come back, cutting out farther out.
So how long would that first student be on the bus that gets picked up first?
That's all three tiers, so that's not just one.
She's asking about one tier?
She's talking about the elementary only?
Yeah, the elementary.
Elementary?
Yes.
We try to do it less than forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
Less than forty-five? Okay, well, good job.
Thank you.
I look forward to the reevaluation of the routes. Just looking at this quickly, a few years ago, we moved from bus five to bus nine. I'm talking, uh, TMS bus five to TMS bus nine.
Yep.
Bus five, my, my two kids were probably the last two on the bus and it was packed. When we moved, I couldn't believe how many kids weren't on bus nine. So these numbers do, and again, that was a few years ago, so it could be different, but these numbers look awfully close to each other, whereas I saw a significant difference in ridership from bus five to bus nine. So, um, I appreciate that this will be looked at in September and, and, you know, I'm sure Brendan will keep us informed.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Elaine, anything?
No.
All right. Well, I do thank you all for coming tonight. I appreciate, um,
Thank you for inviting us.
the time you gave us. A great presentation and looking forward to continued conversation.
Looking forward to work with the district. It's gonna be a great startup. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have approved homeschool requests for the upcoming school year. Ms. Craigor?
Thank you. Uh, for the upcoming school year, we have received homeschool notifications for forty-eight students. You see there in your packet. These come from twenty-seven families. All required documentation has been reviewed and meets district policy and state regulations. Thirty, uh, just some information, thirty-nine of the forty-eight students were homeschooled last year. Nine of the forty-eight students are new requests. Thirty-seven students who were homeschooled last year have not submitted, um, paperwork for this school year, um, requesting homeschooling. Our policy does indicate August fifteenth as a date. With that said?
Do I have a motion to approve the homeschool requests?
I'll make that motion to approve the homeschool requests.
One second.
One second.
Any discussion?
Just curious, is this like a normal amount of requests for this time of year? I know like some trickle in throughout the school year.
Yep.
But for August, is this normal?
So last year, we had thirty-nine in August and we had thirty-nine in September.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So do you, do you reach out to the families?
Yes.
With a letter?
Yes.
So this isn't in addition to last year? This is starting fresh for this year?
Starting fresh. Every year, they do have to submit a letter of intent. So they, uh, they submit an end-of-year report at the end of the school year indicating their child's attendance and, um, how they did in school with their grades, and then they submit a, um, letter of intent for homeschooling for the new school year.
Okay. Um, I know I had mentioned this before, is that, do you find out why they're continuing to homeschool?
That is not part of our policy. Um, that is something, however, that Superintendent Haskins and I have talked about as, um, part of our plan is to reach out to families, um, and get some information from families if they are willing to share with us.
Okay, yeah, because I know, Rye asked, one of the, um, districts was able to get half of their homeschool students back once they found out why they were leaving. So it was nice to know.
Sure.
It'd be nice to know why there.
Yep.
And you said you have until August fifteenth to fill out the forms?
In our policy, we do ask that the letter of intent be sent in by August fifteenth, um, for new, for families who have, um, submitted an end-of-year report. We do get requests for homeschooling throughout the school year, however, that we do have to, um, bring for approval.
As we've seen.
So those are newer students, the ones that you're getting throughout the year? They're not last year's students?
Uh, no, most likely they'd be new students. So they were either working with us in school already and then for some reason wanted to opt into homeschooling or have moved into district and are opting into homeschooling.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I do appreciate the fact that you're, um, looking at these numbers and perhaps considering , uh, ways that we can try to learn, um, you know, what, what's behind all the homeschool requests. I mean, we've always, always had a certain number of homeschool students. Um, and that, you know, it could be for religious reasons, it could be for any number of cultural reasons, whatever, um, but certainly none of us can deny that the numbers have gone up. Um, and, and, you know, understanding the why, um, I think becomes more, uh, important so that we can look at ways to, you know, make sure that we're serving our students the best we can. I hate to find out that, you know, and I don't know why people are pulling kids out, um, but, you know, I, I think overall, as a school committee overseeing a public school district, we all believe in public education.
Sure.
Um, in that every child in our community should have the ability to take advantage of this free public education. Um, and the fact that they decide not to, um, and, and decide to go with homeschooling and, and we know that there are significant advantages to kids being in classrooms with peers in front of, of highly qualified teachers. Um, and so to, you know, continue to work toward improving that, I, I think is, is something that we need to focus on.
And the enrollment form that you used to do with, um, the high school, the middle school and Ranger, how you break that down? I'm assuming you did that?
We don't, um, talk, we, we don't have it on the agenda. They don't have it tonight.
So this is just homeschooling?
Just homeschooling.
Okay.
Feel free to send an email. All right. Thank you.
Did you vote on that?
Uh, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. I don't know what we'd do without you.
I have to check it off.
Uh, item C, update on Fort Barton TMS transition. Ms. Craigor, back to you.
Yes, we've just had a little bit of time since our last meeting where I gave you more of a robust update, but we did have two focus school group meetings since the last time we met, so I'll just give you a little bit of, uh, highlight what we reviewed. So it was myself, again, Principal Zatoli and Assistant Principal Scott Kellet, along with the group, um, focus group team members, including parents and teachers. Um, some of the highlights were positive feedback was received from parents regarding the third-grade visit to Tiverton Middle School. And then Mr. Kellet went to all of the elementary schools and met with the third-grade, um, students. So, um, we received, like I said, positive feedback from families and we will most likely keep this as part of our annual transition activity because of that positive feedback. Uh, facilities update, the Rising Tigers hallway is actively still being prepped. Uh, our maintenance team continues to work hard at that. Our lockers have been removed. We're replacing those with hooks for our students to put their belongings on those hooks. Classrooms are ready to roll and we'll be painting the hallway soon. So we would look forward to having you walk through that hallway and see that. As far as logistics, we did discuss pickup and drop-off procedures. Those have not been finalized yet. We're still working those logistics out for the pickup and drop-off, but we did receive some additional recommendations from families that we want to consider. On August twenty-fifth, from nine to twelve, there is a welcome walkthrough. This is actually for all new students to Tiverton Middle School, but students and families can come, walk through the hallway and see the classrooms. On August first, families received their teacher assignments, supply lists, arrival and dismissal, dismissal procedures and details about that welcome walkthrough. And there is plans underway to discuss how Grade Four PTO is going to combine with Tiverton Middle School's current PTO. So that is the update on that transition. Thank you.
I spoke with Mr. Haskins earlier today. I know that there are members of the school committee that would like to have the advantage of doing a walkthrough. And I think, Sarah, you had an excellent idea. We have a, a meeting scheduled on August twenty-sixth. That's our, our next regularly scheduled meeting. What I'd like us to do is to have that meeting at the middle school. And that perhaps in the hour before our regular meeting, that we do that walkthrough. How's that sound?
I like the idea of that, but I'd, I'd also like to see Fort Barton as well.
Mm-hmm.
By all means, I, uh...
So I don't know if that has to be...
The Fort Barton, the transition class?
Yeah. I want to see how that building's gonna be set up.
Sure.
We can maybe...
Maybe do it a different day or...
It wouldn't be that same day.
Right.
So we can look at a different day? We'll determine that.
Okay.
Sure.
Before school starts?
Before school starts.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Yes.
Next week would be good enough.
No, we're not quite ready yet. We still have some time.
Thank you.
I do, you know, again, it sounds like things are going very well, but obviously, kudos to you and all the hard work you've all done. If there are any facility needs, especially where it pertains to the, in the fourth-grade hallway, please bring those to our attention quickly. And then you, you mentioned hooks. You're gonna put them in the hallway?
Yes.
Are the cubbies gonna be out there too?
So where the lockers, when they took out the lockers, there's like a, what do I want to say? Like a little alcove?
Alcove.
And that's where the hooks will be and then the kids will put their backpacks or whatever on the bottom too.
Cool.
Yeah.
So everything there will be open?
Right.
You'll see the hook.
Yep.
So be very easy for kids to come by and take things that don't belong to them.
The only kids that should be in that hallway are gonna be kids in that room.
But you know that that's not gonna be the way it is. Let's be honest here. There'll be some kids that are going to the ner- like, let's be practical. I'm not saying kids are gonna walk by every day and somebody's gonna be missing a coat. I'm just saying you lose that privacy. And a lot of kids didn't hardly use their lockers, not for backpacks and things because they were so small. But you do lose, lose the privacy. Your kid's gonna have their coats there. Maybe they'll leave their backpacks in the little indentation. I'm just saying, I'm thinking about that.
The focus group did talk a little bit about that and the teachers were part of that discussion too. So they're going to, as part of, you know, protocols for the first few days, they're gonna talk about when you put your bag there and your jacket there, what you need to bring into the classroom. So they'll all have like checklists they talked about. So kind of going through that routine of what you should bring into the classroom. And, you know, some parents said that their kids have phones that they bring to school. We'll consider that if that is happening. So the teachers did talk about that. That did come up in our focus group meeting.
Because it's a good thing to talk about.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why all of this is going into the hallways instead of the classrooms?
The classroom spaces are a little bit smaller than the elementary classrooms that they were in. So it was just a lot of, you know, when coats are in there and backpacks are in there and kids are moving around, there's flexible seating in our classrooms now. So there's not a lot of, it's not desks anymore. And there's not, you know, those nice little areas where you can put your books under. So I think just with the flexible seating, it's a little bit more challenging. And I think all of this is something, you know, that we're gonna review. Is this what makes most sense at this point right now? This is what the teachers and focus group felt like made most, most sense? So it's just something we'll evaluate.
Everything is new.
Yes.
It's a new situation.
Exactly, yes. But I'm glad you brought that up. You know, if we didn't bring that up, that would have been something to consider.
The teachers will have to get used to it.
Yeah.
It's a change.
Yeah. But again, it's been very positive. Mr. Zatoli and Mr. Kellett have been very responsive to staff and to parents who have had questions. We've already had some parents come in. So it's been, I, I think, overall positive. Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thanks again. Next up, approved contract for district-wide psychological testing. Ms. Craigor, there's still not...
So I just want a, the approval to, for the contract for psychological testing services. There is a contract in your packet between, it would be between Tiverton Public Schools and Wellness and Education. This is to provide psychoeducational evaluations to students at Picassett and Tiverton Middle School. We do not have school psychologists at that two, at those two school buildings. We do have school social workers at those buildings and they service the kids with social emotional needs, both students with IEPs and those that do not have IEPs. But one thing we're lacking without a school psychologist is the psychological testing that's done for evaluation purposes. So this would allow us to contract with this company and obtain those services. That would include cognitive, social, emotional and behavioral assessments, functional behavior assessments and consult, consultation services as needed. We did use Wellness and Education last year, so this is kind of an extension of their contract for this year. And these services are actually funded through IDEA Part B grant. So I'm looking for your approval for this contract.
Do I have a motion to approve the contract for psychological services with Wellness and Education?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Is there any discussion?
I'm just curious if you have numbers or like track numbers on usage from last year?
I can get that for you. Yes, we do have that.
Yeah, just because it's like an outside service, are the numbers high enough that would fund a position versus using a consultant?
Well, why don't you ask? We have not been able to obtain any school psychologists. That is why we're without. So we started with looking for a school psychologist for those positions and we're unable to receive any applicants or applicants that are qualified. And then on a side note, a lot of school psychologists are doing things like this. Wellness and Education are working for agencies who do this instead of going into the schools.
Yeah. Makes sense.
I can see the advantage for them.
Yeah.
How many, how many psychologists do, does the district employ right now?
Right now, we have Celeste Urban, full-time. She's mostly at the high school, but will do some other services for us. And Ranger has a school psychologist there just one day a week. All of the schools have social workers. Tiverton Middle School actually has a social worker and a half just because of the number of students that are in that building.
Okay, because our in-house psychologists used to do this, right?
Correct.
But then, okay. And they're all being assessed in school?
Yes.
Okay. And I noticed the school district pays for the test, the, the test forms?
Yeah, so all the test protocols we have already. So they would be using our test protocols for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Obvious question. This isn't something that had to go to bid?
Um, no, this was because it was an extension of last year's?
Yeah. You know, we went out to bid last year's, it's an extension.
Okay.
And this is something new for Wellness that they're doing too because they've become so robust with school districts that their agreement looks a little bit different this year. So we thought that it would be best to bring it to you.
No, appreciate that.
Yep.
So we don't do that every year? I'm just, I'm asking you. We don't do that every year? We don't?
Go out to bid?
Yeah. No?
It hasn't looked like this before. This is something that's relatively new to us. We've been working with Wellness and Education, but again, because they've become much bigger in their agency, they are looking at more of an approval process for this.
Yeah. And we, we went out to bid, from what I see, this was before me, but when we went out to bid back in May of twenty-four, the bid was a multi-year agreement. So what this is, is we're just extending year to year. So this way, we don't handcuff us for the three-year agreement. We would approve the agreement this year. If we decide to hire someone, we have our way out of the contract. So you're kind of just extending the year, year, and then we have them again next year without going out to bid.
Okay. And you shopped around for the best price?
So again, I wasn't part of that bid, but that was the bid that was done in May of twenty-four.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor? It's approved, thank you. Okay. Next up, approved contract with Throughline Fuse AI Grant. Mr. Haskins?
Thank you. I apologize to the committee and to members of the public for the wording of the agenda. We are not seeking approval of a contract this evening. We do not currently have a contract. But I would take the opportunity to inform the committee of the Fuse AI Grant, which, if awarded, would provide a contract with Fuse RI, excuse me, with Throughline. As we continue to position Tiverton School District for the future, I'd like to bring to your attention a promising opportunity to engage in cutting-edge work around artificial intelligence in education through a regional partnership initiative called Fuse AI. Fuse AI is the next phase of the well-regarded Fuse RI program, which ran from 2014 to 2018 and supported districts across Rhode Island in technology integration and personalized learning. The newly-launched Fuse AI Fellowship is designed to help districts like Tiverton thoughtfully navigate the emerging field of AI in education, especially in light of forthcoming guidance from the Rhode Island Department of Education. The fellowship emphasizes a safe, strategic and policy-grounded approach to AI implementation with a strong focus on building internal district capacity over the long term. By participating, Tiverton would gain access to expert facilitation, peer collaboration and practical tools to develop policies, professional learning plans and implementation strategies aligned with our local needs and values. The cost, the total cost of the one-year fellowship is $20,000, but I'm pleased to share that a funding opportunity exists through the Van Buren Charitable Foundation, which is considering proposals to support Newport County districts. Should the grant proposal be accepted, the costs to the district will be fully covered. The grant application was submitted on July twenty-second with funding decisions expected in December. If awarded, the fellowship would officially launch in January of 2026. I see this as a proactive step in helping our district prepare for the future of teaching and learning while aligning with state guidance and national trends. And I'll keep the committee apprised as we await the grant decision. And I would welcome the opportunity for further discussion should we be selected.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? We won't be taking a vote, but we've looked at this. Does anyone have any comments, questions?
So this is just something that we would do if we had the grant?
If we are approved, we would be selecting three teachers across the district who would become Fuse AI fellows, work closely with Throughline Learning to grow their capacity for leadership in this field, who would then help support teachers in our district.
Okay, but we're not, we wouldn't be making a purchase if we don't get the grant? Okay.
The district is under no obligation with this grant opportunity except for the practice of providing a stipend to the teachers who are involved in the work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I will say that I know that there has been some hesitation on the part of the community with respect to incorporating AI into our educational platforms. But the reality is that the kids are already using AI. It's the adults that are behind the curve. I'll tell you that as an older worker, I am now facing the challenge of being required to get used to using AI. And it's not easy for someone my age. So if we can get our teachers trained and our children used to using this very powerful technology and tools in a good way, I think it's, it's for the best in that we, we really do have to move our, our focus here, like it or not. Move on. We're gonna put, put an end to this meeting eventually. FY26 capital request for future Tiverton Town Council gaming allocation meeting. Mr. Andrade?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will start off by saying we, we haven't got any correspondence from Town Council when the FY26 meeting will be. We did have a discussion with them today and they're thinking early September, no, excuse me, it was late September during one of their workshop meetings, I believe it was September twenty-ninth. But once we hear from the town administrator, I'll share that date with you. But to be better prepared for that meeting and aligned with the school committee meetings, I did want to approach you this evening with a, a few critical projects to consider for FY26. So to align our goals with long-term sustainability and operational improvement, I am requesting approval of the proposed capital plan for fiscal year twenty-six. The first project is the basketball court here at Tiverton High School. The current court is original to the building, but it has been refinished for the last twenty-plus years. The company that finishes the court comes in during the Thanksgiving timeframe. They did tell us recently that the court could not sustain any more sanding stain polyurethane applied to it. The wood was starting to deform because of multiple years of seasoning the court. So they were recommending that they strip the court back down to, and when I say sand, they're basically just sanding one, one layer of what was stained in poly last year. Having twenty years of layers is quite a bit, so they would need to take out those twenty years of layers and get down to the wood, replace any wood that might be rotted and whatnot. So we don't have a quote as right now, so what I'm requesting here is $40,000 not-to-succeed number. We would have to go out to bid and do that process. So if there was any changes in the costs, I would come back to you, but I'm asking for approval tonight for just not to succeed, exceed $40,000. The next project is flush valves district-wide. As part of our ongoing maintenance effort to officially and properly function, there's been some restrooms over the years that have been closed that we're hoping to replace the flush valves on them. And the reason is because things are backing up or whatever the case may be. Obviously, sometimes students put the wrong material down the toilet, whatever the case may be. So these flush valves wouldn't help the student problem, but it would help the aging and the failing flush valves across our buildings to properly keep all our bathrooms updated at a cost of $6,276. The quote is attached in your packet this evening. Stage pads at Ranger, these are original stage pads at Ranger. As you may know, Ranger utilizes their gym in kind of a half-and-half situation, so it's a half auditorium, half cafeteria. These pads have deteriorated over the years and they no longer meet safety expeditions. So quote attached for $4,558. Next is exhaust fan at THS. This is a, to replace a sixty thousand, sixty, over sixty-year exhaust fan at the high school cafeteria that is no longer repairable. This is a requirement for the start of school. We obviously are not gonna make that with the capital meeting being pushed to September, but we were cited on this by the State of Rhode Island Inspector. So this is a not-to-exceed $26,000 quote attached. The reason you're seeing this tonight and we're waiting is because as we spoke about, this is part of the lunch fund. This is things that the lunch fund would cover in years past. When we recently found out about the USDA grant exhaustion and the deficit, we realized for the lunch fund, this is now something I'm asking for capital. So in years past, these type of repairs in the cafeterias were always covered during, during the lunch fund, either revenue or USDA. We no longer have that fund balance, if you would, in the lunch fund, so. And as you can tell by... And as you can tell by the price, it's pretty extensive. So that quote is attached as well, and again, $26,000. Last is, excuse me, not last, but last on this page is the HVAC for Tiverton High School that is left remaining of the district-wide heating project. The last remaining project is, again, the high school condenser, which is the front wing. It's the front offices, guidance suite, and library. This actually, project was recently completed. They're doing the final testing for the LG and whatnot. So the council was generous enough to do a $100,000 prior-approved HVAC repair fund. The vendor that completed this project is giving me the final invoices. What he decided to do was give us a not-to-exceed number, which I communicated to the school committee and the town council when we went in front of them during HVAC repairs. Unfortunately, you know, we had way more repairs than we needed to for HVAC through all district-wide. So right now, we currently have $5,000 remaining, so I'm asking for approval of $30,000 to cover this additional HVAC repair fund for the high school, to get every school up and running with AC and heat. Next page is soundproofing for THS. So again, we went out to, I'm asking permission to go out to bid for a soundproofing solution for the high school auditorium. Last year, we installed a cheap, excuse me, last year, we installed a $45,000 sound system funded by an art and music grant from RIDE. However, we installed a soundproofing solution that we thought would work, would work based on the architect and fire code, et cetera, but after speaking to the fire marshal, it wasn't in our best interest to finish installing that as a soundproof measure. So after we installed the sound system and did some tests, we are witnessing some acoustic issues. So I'm asking for permission to go out to bid for a soundproofing that would basically cover the 65-year-old wood surround in the rear of the stage is really causing the problem. We were able to test this with that cheap, cheap product that, again, didn't pass the fire code. So we're hoping to go out to bid and work with the fire marshal on a better soundproofing plan in order to use this sound system to the fullest. Last is district-wide copiers. There's five copiers that are currently being leased. Their lease will expire in FY26 at different times. The lease agreements that were signed almost four years ago were for a buyout at fair market value. Based on my personal opinion, the uses of the machines outweigh the fair market value currently, and I would suggest against pursuing the buyout. Personally, I like a dollar buyout, but the agreement that was signed four years ago was different. So another 36-month lease is 270 a month each, so that's 1350 a month for five copiers, which includes annual maintenance and a specified amount of yearly ink usage. The ROI savings here is approximately $3,000 yearly in savings by buying the copiers outright. So that'd be about 600 times five copiers, including with the annual maintenance and ink usage, so there is an ROI savings. We don't have a quote yet, but we do have committed from one company. I don't like to provide a quote because we would have to go out to bid, so even though we have that one quote, it's not a bidded quote, so we do have to go out to bid. So the total cost of new capital that I just mentioned is the amount of $140,959. Again, as we tabled this discussion last school committee, there is some prior-approved projects by the school committee that were tabled by the town council in a different meeting till future gaming revenue meetings were held. So I just want to draw your attention to $11,000 for digital student records, $3,000 for a net safety barrier for THS baseball dugouts, and $205,479 for touch views. So that total is $219,479. The grand total capital request this evening is $360,813. These items reflect critical needs, priorities through recent facility assessments and input from building leaders in the maintenance department. I will say that when the building committee reconvenes to assess facility upgrades, we may return with some additional requests that may commence during the summer or winter timeframe. So currently, I'm asking for approval on the grand total capital request of $360,813. Any questions on any items?
Let's first take a motion.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the grand total capital request of $360,813, which includes previously-approved $219,479 for a net new approval this evening of $140,959?
Motion to approve capital?
I'll second that motion. Discussion. Kim?
Brendan, you mentioned the State of Rhode Island inspector. Was there anything else that they found when they were here?
Yes, and that's all been replaced in-house.
So it's already been done?
Yeah, or it's in the works to be replaced in-house, yes.
Okay, that's good. The copiers, it mentions annual maintenance, but what about if there's an emergency? Would they have to come out? Do they charge for that? I'm assuming they will.
That would be part of the annual maintenance package.
Okay, because I'm thinking annual maintenance is once a year.
Yeah, yeah, you would think, but the way the annual maintenance works, it's a maintenance package, so they come out as they're called. It's a yearly package, so you pay X amount for that annual maintenance package.
And is this, are these machines from core business?
Most of them are, yes.
Okay.
Four out of five.
The touch views, I was looking at, it was going to be a huge amount of money to install them. Can Dan install them? I mean, is it just like putting them on the wall and hooking them up?
What page do you?
We already approved those. We already approved those.
Yeah. I don't have that in my packet this evening because it was already pre-approved, but I believe the idea was, that was part of the, it was, I would have to go back to that meeting when Dan spoke about them, and he's not here, but.
Because it's $375 per unit, that's why I was just wondering.
Yeah, there was, we wouldn't pay that much money. There was something with, I believe, I, I don't want to give you the wrong answer, so I'd have to follow up, but I think that 205 does not include that number, I believe, Mako, and Dan would be installing them. Do you remember? I don't remember. Yeah. I would have to talk to Dan, Andrew, he's on vacation this week, but I can follow up. Again, that was not part of this package because it was already prior-approved.
He basically put it here so that the town council would consider the entire.
Yeah, I was kind of given a, you know, a nice-to-have to show you the total amount.
That's all.
Anyone else have questions? Elaine? Okay, so here's, I'm going to go piece by piece. Ready for me?
Sure.
The basketball court. And in full disclosure, I'm I have asked that we reinstitute the building committee and schedule a meeting with that committee as quickly as reasonable because I do think it's important that we have members of our community who are, hopefully, we can have members of our community who are experts in the trades and what have you, and who care about our schools to help us evaluate the condition of our facilities and come up with recommendations. We've always had the five-year ride capital plan. I haven't seen it in quite a while. I don't know if we're still working off it or not. I think we need to go back to that, and we need to have a little bit more collaboration in that respect. This basketball court situation has apparently, this is not something that came up this week. It's been out there apparently for months. I'm a little disappointed we're just hearing about it now, and you're asking for $40,000 without any kind of backup or real knowledge. I would like to suggest that we hold off on approving this until you have a more exact idea of how much it's going to cost to do the work you're looking to do before we go to the town council for it. And whereas the town council won't be even entertaining any of this till the end of September, I believe we have time. My questions, really on the next two items, the flush valves and the stage, well, the flush valves first. I, you know, understanding that we are in very tight fiscal times, at some point, should we be asking for things that are considered really more maintenance or finding ways to put those in our budget? And it's not to say that this time isn't the time, but, you know, it's a less-than-10,000-dollar item. Things need to be fixed all the time. It's not unusual. It's not a, you know, oh, this is, and I don't disagree with the need, but it's the question of, you know, why are we really asking for every single fix? Is that truly the case, or is just something we didn't see to put in our budget this year? Do we have any facilities maintenance dollars out there to fix things?
We do, just not much.
Uh huh.
So when I built the budget, I built it off a zero-based budget, so what that means is most of our maintenance and repairs is for maintenance line items such as, we have a maintenance agreement to inspect our bleachers. We have a maintenance agreement to inspect XYZ. You know, we have a lot of that with really, as you know, little dollars for anything extra because of the, you know, kind of the the way our budget was built this year with that many cuts. So yes, you are, you are, in fact, correct, and that's, that is the case. We knew about this, but when we were building the budget, it was tough to incorporate, you know, say, between the two line items, $10,000 for flush valves and stage pads, you know what I mean?
So we need to try to, you know, as we move forward, finding ways to ensure that our budgets are handling all the routine maintenance type of things.
Yeah, I would, I would put this under the cushion. We don't have no cushion in our budget this year.
Exactly, exactly.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
The stage pads for Ranger, do we have any pads at Fort Barton? That could be moved?
Possibly. I don't know the size and everything, so I'd have to look at that.
Is that something we could do?
Off the top of my head, I think the.
As opposed to buying brand-new?
Yeah. We did do that with a couple other products. Like, we moved the steamer from Fort Barton to Bacasa that needed to replace, and we did that type of. But off the top of my head, these pads are smaller in size than the ones that are at Fort Barton gym. Fort Barton gyms along the wall, again, off the top of my head, so I don't know if that would work based on the sizes. I don't think you would want to cut the pads and it kind of.
But is it something at least that can be considered before we?
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Move forward?
Yeah, definitely.
The fan at the high school, it is one of those.
Yeah, that one's a tough one. That's, we have no choice.
60-year-old fan, oh my goodness.
Yeah.
I'll stay out of that for now. The HVAC thing, obviously, it's, I know you would have liked to have stayed within the budget that the town council had provided and, you know, but it is necessary repairs, so I don't have any kind of real issue on that at all. The soundproofing at THS, again, this is, you know, in line with the basketball floor. There's no quotes here. I think we have time, right, to go out, whether it be to go out to bid or at least get a reasonable quote that we can talk about that again in September before we decide. And then the copiers, a little confused. Are you recommending that we buy them?
Correct. We currently lease them. The leases are expiring.
Yep.
In order to keep the ones we have, we have to buy them out at fair market value. So either way, you have to come up with the money to buy them out. We do have that, and we basically have this in the operating budget, but I would suggest buying them outright rather than lease.
So are you suggesting we buy new ones or the ones that are in place?
I would suggest buying new ones. That's why I'm putting this on the capital list.
Okay, so that would be $9,500, and that purchase would include maintenance contracts?
Yeah, so that, what we have in the budget would cover the annual maintenance and the yearly ink usage, so it would kind of cover us net this year. Future years, we would benefit from buying the copiers this year. We would have less of an operating expense in the future.
And then what pays you go for maintenance?
What is it? Yeah, we would pay, I think it's $900 a copier for each year, so, yeah, yeah. So it's cheaper than, you know, a 36-month lease.
I mean, anybody who works in an office, especially those that actually use copiers, which is becoming less and less out in the world.
Yeah, exactly. And we would have a little more control on ink usage and whatnot, you know what I mean? We do today, but it's easier when we're, you know, if we continue to buy them, you know, it's a little more seeing the purchase rather than paying the invoice, you know what I mean, so.
So I know that we have a motion and a second. And certainly, the 20, the 30, no, sorry, $26,000 for that exhaust fan, that's critical. What else here is critical that has to be done before the start of the year?
The basketball courts, because, you know, that would be a dire need basically before the basketball season.
If we did nothing right now?
Yep.
What would happen?
Be a good question. I would have to, you know, from what I'm told by the maintenance team, from an athletic director, for what the company told them was this was the last season we could get away with it, so.
But that's their opinion.
But I think that could be a safety issue.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
That's what I was going to say. The court would most likely probably be slippery if we didn't do it. Yeah.
Can you put a little bit more into the work on that to get a quote and understand more fully what that project?
Yeah, so I had follow-up with the athletic director today, and he's supposed to give me some more information, so.
So maybe we can defer that one?
Yeah. Again, as you know, this list was.
Even if it's just to our next meeting?
Yeah, this list was created based on when the town council meeting would be. I thought it was going to be earlier, so now they have some more time. It's definitely helpful.
Yeah. However, right, that exhaust fan does appear to be an immediate need, an emergency need. Is there any way that you could reach out to the town administrator to get on their next agenda, just to ask for that emergency item?
I can do that tomorrow.
I know in the past, they've been amenable to emergency requests, and to me, that exhaust fan sounds like it?
Yep. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I would probably recommend doing the exhaust fan and the HVAC.
Okay. I don't have a problem with that.
Do we need to amend our motion?
Yeah. So we took the motion, we have a second. So do I have a motion to amend, to approve only $26,000 for the exhaust fan at the high school and $30,000 HVAC for the high school for a total of $56,000?
Motion to amend the previous motion to approve exhaust fan and HVAC.
I'll second.
So just to be clear, in case I got my Robert's rules wrong, what we're looking to do is this evening, only approve those two items for you to go ahead and approach the town about them now and then have continued discussions on the other items and gives us some time to pull together the building committee to discuss that and perhaps some other needs. Does it make sense?
Absolutely.
Any other questions, anyone? Okay, all in favor? You name it, Miss. Thank you. All right, last on the agenda, and it is dark out already. Update on the FY26 deficit discussion between school and town leaders. So I just wanted to update the school committee on this quickly. We did meet today with the town administrator, the town treasurer, the town council president, and the town solicitor. And that meeting included Mr. Andrade, Mr. Haskins, myself, and Mr. Scangio from the school side, and discussed, you know, where we are with the FY25 deficit projection. Mr. Andrade gave a breakdown. I think it would be fair to say that we're at about a $960,000 final number at this point-ish, preliminary, right? And of course, understanding that the audit has not even begun as of yet, right? So you have to go through the audit process. So you have to go through the audit process. We're also waiting for some grant reimbursements to come through. So there's still a few things, a few balls in the air, but we did have a very productive discussion. It was collegial. I think that the town council, well, obviously, they're going to have, they're covering the deficit because they have no choice. They're the ones who carry the money. But, you know, we did start our discussions over, you know, how we're going to cover paying that back because it is our responsibility as a school committee, right, to honor our budgets. So I think the town council will be discussing this at their next meeting, which I think is scheduled for next Tuesday, because I think Monday's a holiday. And so they will have some discussion around that. But I do think that any agreements that come to be, at least from the sounds of it today, will be good for everyone involved in that we will be able to, you know, move on with the topics at hand, which is, you know, future-forward looking and making sure that our students get what they need with the appropriations that we have. So that is my update on that. Our next meeting will be on August 26th at the Tiverton Middle School. We'll start at 6:00 PM with a tour of the new fourth-grade hallway. And so hopefully, we'll have some fun doing that. And then we'll convene into regular session at 7:00. And then after that, we're scheduled to meet again on September 9th. As we completed our open session, executive session earlier, we have no reason to go back into executive session. So at this time, could I, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor? Clear adjourn.